The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the August 6, 2024 City Council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of the council meetings are available upon request after the council meeting. And for real-time transcription, visit the Apple, your Apple app or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the phone numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov or in person here in the main auditorium in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the City Council. If any were received, they will be noted for the record. And when we get to the public comment period, this meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and alternates Tuesdays at 8:00 PM and archived for viewing in the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov. And we will not, we will now proceed to the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Ruth Lowe. And then follow, please remain standing, followed by invocation by Kandahar Pabush of Temple Bath, Israel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please rise, face the flag, hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Maybe do invocation for us? You do, I know you're my kid's Sunday school teacher. Okay, now we'll ask that Councilmember Ty to do invocation for us.
This is highly unusual, but if you'll pray with me. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be together. We're just grateful that you have seen fit that we get one more day. Help us to do our very best for Diamond Bar and surrounding communities. Help us to be aware for folks that need our help and that we would be listening to them and that we would keep them in mind as they need help from the community. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thanks for the opportunity to serve our community and pray all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Thank you, Councilmember Ty, and thank you, Councilmember Lowe. All right. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Lowe?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ty?
Here.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Liu?
Here.
Thank you so much. And for the approval of the agenda, the City Council met in a closed session earlier starting at 5:30 today. The City Attorney Seneval, are there any reportable actions?
Mayor, there's no reportable action at a closed session today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seneval. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And the agenda is hereby approved. And we will have, we have a special presentation, a special presentation from the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government on the 5760 Confluent Project Update. And from the COG, representing Renee Cornell, Senior Manager, a Senior Project Manager, and Yanin Rivera, the Management Analyst, will give the presentation. Thank you so much.
Iton? Oh, sorry, Destin. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Yanin Rivera, Management Analyst with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government. I'm here tonight with Senior Project Manager Renee Cornell, Director of Capital Projects, Kevin Lai, Director of Government Community Relations, Ricky Choi, and Principal Management Analyst Aurelio Podcasts. We will be updating tonight on the 5760 project. As you can see, this is a project overview. We are currently working on the Grand Avenue off-ramp. We will be widening the Golden Springs Bridge, moving towards the Grand Avenue reconfiguration. After that, we will be adding an additional lane, which will take you to the bypass to the 60 freeway east. Can you press play? This is the rendering of the project when completed. Here you are going down the 60 freeway. Now you are exiting the Grand Avenue off-ramp. That top in the corner, you are looking at the reconfigured Grand Avenue Bridge. And you continue driving on the 60. Now you're taking the new lane, the additional new lane, which will take you to the bypass to merge up ahead on the 60 freeway, meaning that if you didn't have enough time to cut through traffic and go down all four lanes, you can stay on the new lane, continue on the bypass, and continue and take the 60 east up ahead, which they will both merge. Current progress and our project schedule. We started construction back in 2023. 2024, we are currently working on retaining walls, utility relocations, and sewer lines at Golden Springs Drive. In 2025, demolition will start portion of the existing Grand Avenue Bridge, and it will still be open to traffic while we are still working. And in 2026, the first stage of the Grand Avenue Bridge reconstruction will be completed. Moving, construction outgoing 2027. The bypass of the 60 freeway exit on the Grand Avenue ramp will be completed and the Grand Avenue Bridge completion, taking us to the end of construction in June 2028, which will be ready for the July 2028 Olympics. Here you're looking at a rendering of the new Grand Avenue off-ramp. And now I'll pass it down to Senior Project Manager Renee Cornell, which will continue updating us on current progress. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. So currently, right now, for the Grand Avenue off-ramp bridge, we're working on the foundations. Those steel piles go 60 feet below what you see there. So once that's in, we can start building the first phases of the bridge. Those steel piles work in, for many purposes, for the bridge not to settle, once it's the weight of it is on the foundation, in case of a seismic event, it won't jump, or with the wave, it won't break off. So the piles are in. If you're out there driving in the area, you'll see that we're starting forming the vertical wall of the abutment. And then after that, we will continue the retaining walls to the south of that, and that will allow us to continue the bridge construction. On Grand Avenue, the rendering, this is once complete. Right now, you can see that upside-down H, the retaining wall is up. A couple of months ago, you saw a big pile of dirt, and then the pile of dirt was gone. Now the wall is up. Basically, what we did is, it's called the surcharge. We put so much weight on it, we let it sit for 180 days, and then the soil settles. That doesn't allow for the, once we put the wall, it won't settle. So I think it settled around seven inches from the time of all that dirt till now. So once that settlement period was over, we were able to build a wall. That's an MSE wall, it's pretty easy, it's like Legos, you kind of just stack it up and just put the dirt. That big concrete channel, what you see there, it's an Austin vault, that's going to collect the drainage, all the surrounding areas, goes to that point. Once it overfills, it'll go to the storm drain pipe that's underneath the 60 freeway right now. Towards the eastern limits of the project, as Yenin mentioned, there's going to be a bypass bridge. When you're heading towards Brea, there's two ways to catch the 60 and the 57s in the middle. So what we're going to do is we're going to do the same thing on heading eastbound towards Chino and Pomona. It's going to be the 60 towards the further left, keeping the carpool lane and the 57. The bypass bridge towards the right, the alternate 60 east that you see, I wish I had a pointer. That's for a lot of the local traffic. If you get on the 60, you can go to the four lanes towards the north, you can just head straight, I'll take it to the 60. This one? Okay, let's see. No, thank you though. Right now, what we're doing is part of the slopes on the freeway, we cut that dirt back. What we did is we installed soil nails. Basically, it's these steel rods that go underneath the freeway, then you pull on them and tensions them back, so that holds the existing freeway. Right now, in the next coming weeks, what we're going to do is relocate some of the utilities in the area. Afterwards, we're going to mobilize the foundation equipment in the area and start working on the abutments. On, right here outside AQMD and City Hall, it is a sewer line. We appreciate the coordination we've had with the city, with Christian Alpika. We have a previous working relationship from the Lemon Project, the interchange. So far, it's 3,000 feet that has to go in of sewer pipe. It's deep, it's around 12 foot deep, 12 foot at the shallowest and 20 feet at the deepest. 2,000 feet of that is in, we expect to be complete with the sewer line in 2024. That sewer line is very critical because once that sewer line is in, we can abandon an existing sewer line that goes behind the Aries and it feeds a lot of the local sewer. That, once that existing sewer line is out of service, that's going to open up a majority of the project, which is going to be construction of the retaining wall outside of the Aries Hotel, and allows us to complete the remaining portion of the Grand Avenue off-ramp bridge. Other areas of the project, near the new maintenance building, more retaining walls are going up. That had a similar situation towards the Grand Avenue off-ramp where you had a surcharge period, we had a big pile of dirt there, now we took it out, now it's settled, now we can start building the retaining wall. Right now, this picture's from two weeks ago, but if you go out there, you see the footings are in and the vertical rebar is sticking out, and that's for the stem walls. Palomino Drive, behind a lot of the residents, we are working on the sound walls and the retaining walls. Some of this work was scheduled to happen later on in Project 2027, but in order to reduce our project limits, we decided to do that work first. A lot of the sound walls are in, we encountered some unforeseen utilities, but we were able to work with Edison. They had a guy wire tied to a tree, so we were able to coordinate with them and fix some of the stuff. So a lot of the retaining walls are up, after the wall is up, then the sound wall, typical brick layer goes up. Community outreach, Aurelio, part of our team, he's on the project full-time, he's familiar, faced a lot of the residents, a lot of the businesses. So we do continue to try to do as much outreach as we can. We have our phone number that you call and we'll get back to you. That's our email with any questions. And we're also available on Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. Community engagement, to the left, that is one of our X posts with the closure, basically letting people know that we're going to close the off-ramp and the detour. We post regularly on X and other social media, and that picture to the right is a town hall meeting we had earlier in the year. We received some positive feedback and we had good attendance. So detours, this project, it's very complex, there's a lot of detours, so we'll continue to work with the city, continue to post, continue to use the CMS signs in the project area to continue to update the project, the public. Here's another one on our website of the SGV COG, we have the renderings that I showed you, they can be provided to you at any time. And sometimes things don't go according to plan, so we have some last-minute cancellation of closure, so that's a sample of our closure notice. And thank you, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Senior Project Manager Renee Cornell. Question from Councilmember Ty.
I don't have a question, I just want to reinforce what you're doing here. Information is everything. So when you can get that out, when you can push that out, people might not like it. People won't like how long it's going to take, but they like knowing what you're telling them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
Thank you, Renee, for the presentation. I want to special recognize Aurelio. You kept up with your promise to send out weekly emails, and I'm on that list. So thank you. We were at that town hall back in March, and I know you caught a lot of heat from a lot of our residents, so I appreciate you continuing to send that weekly update. And that's in addition to all the other stuff that you guys already do. So thank you again for responding to our needs and our residents' needs to keep us informed. I know it's a long project, five more years, four more years, but we'll get there. Thank you again.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Remember, during our town hall meeting, there's a few people raised a question that when they drive on the 60 east, they're on the carpool lane, and they wanted something to tell them to merge to the right earlier so that they can, if they have to go to 57, they can go that early in order to avoid the last-minute change of lanes. Is that something that you'll consideration to put some sign there to let people know that they should merge to the right?
Right now, if you're coming from Brea, heading towards, I believe, Chino, you have to go up on that bridge, and that's the 60 carpool lane. And I think some of the concerns are, when you're on a 60, if I understood it correctly, you have to get off quickly to get on the 57. Right now, we're checking with what the allowable distances is, depending on the number of lanes and the width of the lane you have, and the speed, you have a certain distance to be able to get out. I think it's around, depending on each lane, you get around 100 feet. So we're taking a look at that to see if it's feasible, but right now, no decision has been made so far. It's going to maintain the same manner, the same carpool. So the purpose of that is to stay on the 60 carpool lane. If you want to stay on the 57, I think you need to not go on the carpool.
Yeah, correct. There's people, people have to move outside the carpool to the regular lens, like three or four lens, so that they can go to the 57. So sometimes, if there's a lot of traffic, it's difficult.
Yeah, it's, we're designing this, we have to account for like the full speed, but we know once we go in that area, it's very, during traffic hours, it's very stop and go, but it's something we'll continue to look at. Right now, the final striping doesn't go until 2028. So a lot of the configuration now is temporary, but it's something we'll look at. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, the COG team, and definitely for all you do, and definitely it's a service with a smile, and I never seen Senior Manager, Project Manager Renee not smile. He always provide explanations and answers with a smile. Thank you, appreciate that. We appreciate that. And that, all the questions? Okay, I have one more question, and some from some residents. We know the 5760 freeway is to unlock some of the traffic congestion. Can you talk a little bit about that, how the improvement will, for safety improvement as well?
Yeah, so right now, what we're trying to do is eliminate the weaving. The Grand Avenue Bridge, which will go over the existing freeway, that should take out a lot of the traffic trying to get off on Grand Avenue. It's, I take it on my commute every day to work, so I have to go four lanes and get out. So that should alleviate some of the weaving. Right now, it's, five lanes come in from the 60, three lanes come from the 57, and once you're in a confluence, it's seven lanes. So the additional purpose lane is going to make it eight lanes, through, eight lanes in, eight lanes out. That should also avoid some of the people trying to merge in the same lane. And lastly, the fourth bridge, the bypass bridge, that's going to eliminate some of the weaving on towards the eastern limits, where if you want to stay, get off on the freeway, if you want to get on the freeway and stay on the 60, you got to go all the way to the north. So a lot of that, the cross-traffic will be, will be thrown out, will be set on other alignments versus on the freeway. That's some of the safety improvements I can think of. It's a lot of, I've seen it all the time, where people hit each other on side-swiping. So we're trying to avoid a lot of that.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, the SGV COG team. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to our City Manager Report, City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And for public comment, public comment is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address, to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not in the agenda that are within subject jurisdiction of the council. Although the City Council values your opinion comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the City Council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. This, there is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the City Council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted speaker cards first, and then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining us teleconference who may wish to speak on their public comment. I have received three speaker cards, and first we have Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, City staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from the Diamond Bar Library. We'll celebrate the end of summer discovery program tomorrow, August 7th, at 2:00 PM, with a face paint and balloon party. Transform your face into magical creatures, superheroes, or beloved characters, and watch as a skilled balloon twister craft amazing balloon figures for you to keep. This program is for ages 2 and up with parent or caregiver, sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Are you up for a marble maze challenge? Think like an engineer, explore the design process, and create a marble maze using straws, tape, and paper plate. This program is for ages 2 to 5 to 12 with adult caregiver and will take place on Saturday, August 10th, at 2:00 PM. Teens, create your own mini rock coaster on Monday, August 12th, at 4:00 PM. Choose from beginner designs and learn how to hand-tuff using a punch needle. It is simple and fun and might become your new hobby. Free downloadable audiobooks, music, and streaming videos are waiting for you. Join us for a digital drop-in session on Thursday, August 15th, at 1:00 PM, and learn how to download and enjoy them on your TV, smartphone, tablet, and computer. Please visit our website, OACountyLibrary.org, for more program information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And next, we have Mr. Alan Wilson. Mr. Alan Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Alan Wilson, and I am a 28-year resident of the City of Diamond Bar. I just want to bring your attention on a couple of issues. One is your consent item on 5.3. You are requesting for a change of Prop 8 funds. It kind of reminds me of a candidate who said in 1980, there you go again, we're again to Prop Twitching Fund with Prop A for 1.3 million for $1 million. I have no problems with Twitching Fund, as long as it's dollar-for-dollar. I don't understand, why are we getting 75 cents on a dollar? The Prop 8 has been part of the county since the voter voted for this in November of 1980, and it's been going on for 44 years. The pot of money is sitting in there, and we keep rates, it's part of the sales tax. It's quite enormous, but I just hope that you don't just approve this, I just hope you have a thorough discussion on this. Why can we not get a dollar-for-dollar? I understand the money, if it's there, you know, the county takes it away. And it's very disturbing that we feel, I just feel like we don't have voices in the county government, in the bureaucracy, and say, this is the pot of money, you know, you either use it or lose it. It belongs to Diamond Bar taxpayers. We paid dearly at the pump. We don't get any tax rate, we should grow in the math of government. But it's changed to 1.3 million for $1 million. $333,000 is a lot of money, and I'm just very concerned about that. And it's very disturbing that we're going to go through this road again. Hope that there will be better considerations of swapping this fund for dollar-for-dollar. And the other issue I have is, there was a recent paving that happened on Golden Springs. The paving was great, it's just the fact that it didn't seem that the city street was smooth as it was before. I know there's a little bump here and there, and I know they're still working on the lines and so forth. This kind of project was kind of unusual because, you know, you thought they would smooth it out, but it didn't seem smooth as it before. So I don't know what happened to that. And, but other than that, thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Wilson. And next, we have Deputy Mr. Evan Scheller, and like to invite him after, he even talks about a childhood cancer event. Sir?
We're good? All right. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Councilmembers. I've obviously been in the city for quite a long time, but I'm on here, I'm here talking about a personal event that's going to be going on. We are doing, so a lot of people don't know that September is We are doing, so a lot of people don't know that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And so because it's coming up, and my child is a cancer survivor. It's a big part of our lives. And so we've teamed up with a five oh one C three, it's called Kit Cancer, and they help us thrive through our events. And so we're going to be holding a, basically a walk-run event. It's going to be September twenty-eighth, it's going to be eleven to three, I believe, on, it's a Saturday. And we just want anyone in the community and yourselves, however you guys would like to be involved. The day is going to bring a lot of community. We're going to be educating people on just childhood cancer. We've already started working with the school districts as well. And the Walnut Valley Unified School District is going to even implement something for that week to encourage people, to encourage the students to learn a little bit more about childhood cancer. And so we are trying to team with the community and with the school district for this event. So I would love for your guys' support and come on out and hang out with us. Have a great day.
You didn't say where it was.
Oh, it's at South Point Middle School.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Scheller. See you there.
Mr. Scheller, do you have any flyer for your, for your event?
I do have flyers, they are in my hand if you, if you want to get them on the way out. I also have a digital five flyer if you guys want me to email you the flyer as well. Again, anyone that wants to support by even just posting on their social medias to advertise for the event, that would be great as well. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that's for, that's for hope event. And, all right. So that's all the speaker cards I have at this point. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on public comments, please submit a speaker card. City Clerk Santana, were there any public comments emailed receive?
Yes, Mayor Lu, there was one email from Vince Lu submitted for public comment tonight. It was forwarded to the city council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for public viewing. We are having audio problems. We do have one caller on the line, but she can't hear us, so we're trying to resolve that right now.
Okay.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound.
I don't know if that worked, but it is time for public comment. So if anyone on this line would like to leave a public comment, please click on the raised hand icon in your GoToWebinar program now. And there were no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. And that's on, on the teleconference. So once again, if anyone would like to speak or on public comment, address the council. And seeing none, we will close the public comment session at this point. And we'll now move on to the schedule of future events and consent calendar. City Manager, City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events? And then proceed to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The always popular free drive-through paper shredding and e-waste collection event will take place on Saturday, August tenth, from nine A M. to one P M. in the AQMD parking lot. Coffee with the Cop will also be held Saturday morning, August tenth, from eight A M. to ten A M. at Grid Coffee at the corner of Diamond Bar Boulevard and Grand adjacent to the Jack in the Box. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, August thirteenth, starting at six thirty P M. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. There will be a Red Cross Blood Drive on Monday, August nineteenth, from nine A M. to three P M. at the Diamond Bar Center. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twentieth, starting at six thirty P M. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the July sixteenth, city council regular meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated July tenth through July thirtieth, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four approving a Prop A exchange agreement with the City of Commerce, cancellation of the September third regular city council meeting, approval of a consultant services agreement with VitiFlow for audiovisual and teleproduction engineering services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, second reading by title only, which I will read, and adoption of ordinance oh four twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Diamond Bar, California, adding section twelve point zero zero point four seven zero, smoking prohibited in city parks to Division Two Parks Rules and Regulations of Chapter twelve point zero zero, Parks and Recreation of Title Twelve, Streets, sidewalks, and public property of the Diamond Bar City Code to prohibit smoking in city parks. Adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five approving blanket authority to file applications for Measure A grant funds from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District, and award of a construction agreement with SiteRep Construction Services for the Maple Hill Park Playground and Restroom Replacement Project, including denial of a bid protest, approval of related budget adjustments and appropriations, and a determination that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And your colleagues, with any of our colleagues, who, any items for discussion?
I'd like to pull five point two just to ask a question.
I'd like to pull five point eight, please.
Okay, we're pulling five point two and then five point eight.
I'd like to pull a five point three.
Okay, five point three. Anyone else? Okay, so aside from five point two, five point eight, and five point three.
I'll move for approval for the remaining items on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Chow and then a second from Councilmember Lo. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ting?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. And now let's go to item five point two.
Thank you. Mr. Fox, I guess I could have asked this earlier this week, but I noticed in the check register that we're paying eight hundred dollars for the repair of a Flock camera. Are we having trouble with those? Are we finding that there is much trouble to keep safe as, as we had heard before?
No, those charges are related to vandalism. We've had two instances in which a camera was spray painted, and at that point, it's not salvageable. And so we have to replace that camera. And so when the techs are out in the field, they'll take a look and see that a camera is offline. They'll go look to see what condition that camera is in. If it's painted over, they have to replace it. We ultimately are trying to keep that same, because we've placed them at locations to cast a net around the city in the best effective way to use that data. If one of those goes down, we need to replace it to maintain the same level of service for that program.
What do we do, though, to make sure that they, they can't reach it and spray, spray paint it in the future? Are we putting them up higher or are we?
Well, they're placed, we work with Flock to place them based on the most effective solar coverage. And so they're all powered with few exceptions with solar batteries. And so they're placed at levels that are deemed appropriate by the provider. There are some things that are out there that we're looking into that are kind of slipcovers for these that may be helpful in preventing someone from having to replace or preventing us from having to replace an entire camera if the lens itself is damaged. But we're still kind of seeing if those actually work and if they're available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tai, and five point eight.
Five point eight.
All right.
Councilmember.
I believe five point three was also called.
Yes, we'll go to five point three after five point, we want to go in chronological order. Okay, let's go five point three, thank you.
Okay, five point three is related to the fund exchange that also relate to the, one of the speaker, Mr. Alan Wilson's speech. He has a question, why using this kind of exchange rate? And in the past, I have a question about that. Now, I think because the, the fund we are using for exchange is restricted and it has to be used within certain period of time. And so that we use that to, to, to change for something that we can use in other areas and with like an extended period of time. So that, that kind of exchange will probably affect the exchange rate. So my question is for Mr. Fox is that is there any set of rule of exchange of this kind of swap of this fund? Okay, how do we usually proceed with this, this kind of exchange?
The recommendation is to identify these funds for park development, our future park development projects, if that's the question.
My question is that will you, how to decide the, the rate of exchange?
The, the actual exchange rate, typically, this is a process that we coordinate through Metro, and they act as kind of a clearinghouse of cities that are seeking funds for their projects to utilize Prop A funds. So they kind of identify who is in the market to make these exchanges. My understanding, the exchange rates do vary from time to time. It has been, at least in my history, as low as seventy cents on the dollar and maybe as high as eighty cents on the dollar. So it does fluctuate, but it is negotiated ultimately between the two agencies. And, and we arrived at a seventy-five cents on, on the dollar for, for this particular transaction.
So in other words, there is a market for this kind of a fund exchange.
That, that is true, and it is, it is a process that is authorized by the, by a Metro who controls these funds.
Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ting. Any other questions on this item?
I'll just have a follow-up. The ability to make the exchanges in the first place, was that part of the legislation when they put Prop A into effect?
That I do not know if it was actually in the enabling legislation. I do know it's in their guidelines at this point. And for, for many cities similar to Diamond Bar, these particular funds are difficult to spend. We don't have a lot of capital needs for our public transportation system. If you recall, we did spend a fair amount of money replacing bus stops in the last year. We have various ADA improvements related to some of the bus stops in this year's budget. We are utilizing some funding for the Diamond Bar Complete Streets Project related to public transportation. We fund our Diamond Ride tax, senior taxi cab service through the, these funds, but we still have excess funds that can't be utilized and are at risk of losing.
And what's the period that we would be at risk of losing? Do we get to hold on to it for, is it two years, I think?
I believe it's three years that we can accumulate it, and then we would lose it and it would go back to Metro for dispersment. So we would potentially be losing, you know, a million and a half dollars a year if we can't spend it moving forward.
Well, hypothetically, if we did receive that million and we were to, I think we have very good investment officers in our staff. I mean, just even investing the million dollars that, that we do get, we would actually recoup that, some of that twenty-five cents on the dollar that we're giving up. When that, it seems to me that that's another way to go.
Yeah, like we said, this is an eligible process and a recognized process that many cities go through as, you know, through, through the, through Metro.
Thank you.
And this, this fund is going into, those are parks and rec, and we identify there's, there's an urgent need to, for parks and rec improvement for some of the facilities, correct, Mr. Fox?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, thank you, and we'll move on to item five point eight.
Okay, so this is kind of a segue from your last comment about parks and rec. So five point eight is a, is a contract with Citirrep Construction to do the work at Maple Hill Park Playground. I have two basic questions. One is with regard to the awarding of the contract to Citirrep Construction. And then the second question that I have is related to the, the cost of this project. It's from the report, I see that we have a protest letter from a contractor who was not the successful bidder, and that's at Casa Construction. And one of the points of their, the protest, well, they have various points with each of the protests are, our response to them is that the city council can waive those irregularities and, and, and go with our contract. So prior to, I think, the city council waiving that irregularity, my question is with regard to one of the protest items. And item number one is that one of our qualification is that the successful bidder, or one of the requirements is that the bidder have been licensed for a minimum of five continuous years prior to the opening bid. And the con, the, the protest is that the bidder that is being considered for awarding of the contract has been in business since July twenty-one of twenty twenty-two. So rather than having a five-year track record, it is, what, two years? It's just a two-year record. And I believe our response is that it's, it's good enough, it's long enough. So I'm just asking, can we expand on that a little bit further, please?
Okay, so, so staff and I worked on the response to the protest. And in terms of the qualifications, yeah, the time was not met, but the number of projects that the company has done was sufficient for us to be comfortable that they have the qualifications to be able to proceed and comply with the contract documentation and construct the project.
How many kind of projects are we talking about? I mean, it's only two years, it takes a while to do projects, how many have they done?
Well, these are, these are park-type projects. I don't have the actual list in front of me, I think.
Who was it, Hal? Mayor and members of the city council, five point eight, add a little bit more to that, too. And now, just within the last couple of years, they've already completed two projects. One was a neighborhood traffic management program. I believe the streets is North Hampton Street at the northeastern part of city. And then the other one, a little bit more recently, was the, the Drange Basin at the end of Steve Canyon Roadway. So all in all, when we look at the qualification of any contractor is not only the licensing requirements, of course, but also the relevant experience and also similar projects, not also, not only within our community, but in, in the surrounding areas. So they do possess all those relevant experiences and the workmanship.
So, so because of the, the positive experience reference, so to speak, of the two projects that they've done in our city, it outweighs the requirement of the five years or I, I would imagine that the protester has the, the relevant five years experience in that regard.
Madam, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, but at the same time, too, it's going to cost the city more, more money as well, based on the bid proposal submitted by the second little bidder.
Right, 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 okay, all right, all right, so, okay, great, thank you.
Let me just piggyback on that. So you, we have two, in, in two years in business, they've done two in Diamond Bar. How many have they done total?
I was just reminded, they also did the Can Luke Trail project that was overseen by our staff as well.
So that's three.
Three projects to date.
If they've been in business for two years, how many have they done outside of Diamond Bar, do we know?
In, in the bid proposal, they also have a list of all the projects within the last five years, so I will have to go into that, the bid proposal. But as we know, that these, these contractors have been very busy and, and they've been doing a lot of work in, in our city as well as in adjacent communities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo, Councilmember Tai. Any more question? Okay, here you go.
So my other question is with regard to the, the. So my other question is with regard to the cost of the project. I believe, were we not talking about that this would be like a six hundred fifty thousand dollar project? But now we're looking at one point four three nine. What happened? How did it get so expensive?
You are correct. We did budget initially six hundred thousand dollars in the C I P a couple of years ago.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And that was kind of based upon the conceptual designs to replace the playground and the restroom building. Once we got into design, I think that the ADA compliance requirements proved to be a little bit more involved than needed. Also, as we've seen across the board, costs have increased dramatically, you know, over the last couple of years. We did receive a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant from Senator Archuleta in order to help with the project. So I think at the end of the day, kind of our net, our net cost will be somewhat less than that once we get full reimbursement.
Okay, because I was, I was thinking this would be funded completely by Senator Archuleta's grant.
I think that was the hope, that we would have been able to bring it in at a one point two million dollars, you know, which, you know, the senator's grant plus what we had budgeted. Unfortunately, the costs have escalated and some of the complexities of the ADA issues, we had to, you know, do more work than I think originally anticipated.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai and Councilmember Lo. And any more questions to this, if not?
Mayor, I'll move for approval for this item five point eight.
Okay, how about, we have five point two, five point three, and five point eight?
I'm sorry, for all three, please.
All three? So we have a motion from Councilmember Lo on five point two, five point three, and then five point eight.
I'll second.
And the second from Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Tang. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, thank you so much. Motion passes. And there are no, there are no public hearings this evening, onto the, this evening's agenda. And there is also no council consideration items on tonight's agenda. We will now move on to council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance reports and council comments. I will start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to join the L A Division of Lead California Cities for a sit-down with Council, with Supervisor Leece a couple of days ago. And in that discussion, it's mostly about our shared priorities and some of our common challenges. And one of the topic of discussion was about the governance reform that the board supervisors recently voted to approve to appear on the November ballot. So that proposal essentially will expand the board from five to nine, plus an elected C E O for the county. So that's something very different from what we have right now. And we had a whole discussion about checks and balances, about who's responsible for what. So it was a very robust discussion. We also talked about Measure A, which is replacing Measure H, which was sunset in twenty twenty-seven. So I think that's Measure A. Supervisor talked about her commitment to making sure that local cities have more of a say in how the money is paid back to us. She did emphasize that the way it currently works, that the money will flow through the COG, either San Gabriel Valley COG or the Gateway COG, and then will be dispersed to individual cities in that manner. So, you know, collectively, the board, the L A Division Board did express our concern and our, our ask is to have more control over how the funding is allocated back to the cities. So that's my report for that meeting. I also want to congratulate, as many of you will be following the Paris Olympic, want to congratulate Diamond Bar High School alumnus Vincent Chu, class of twenty seventeen, who is representing USA badminton team. We wish him very well. I'm not sure how, if the competition's over, but we hope him well. And also, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony with the COG on the Turnbull Canyon groundbreaking. That's the last of the great separation projects, the nineteenth separation project. And that's the last one they have scheduled with the Alameda Corridor East Project. So that one's scheduled to finish in twenty, I think they say twenty twenty-eight or twenty-six, seven. It's in a few years. Kind of optimistic, but it's two hundred million dollar project. But we'll, I'll believe it when I see it. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And we'll go over to Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give staff a big kudos and thank you for the really excellent summer concert series and movie series that we had over the last six, eight weeks. It was just very well attended, lots of fun, and it really brought a sense of community into our, to our city. So thank you for that and look forward to what's happening next year. I just want to highlight the Red Cross Blood Drive that is scheduled for August nineteenth. There's, there's really a shortage, a need for, for blood in our community. So if you're able and you're, you're interested, please sign up. It's August nineteenth. This is the last, you know, the last hurrah for summer. It's the last month of August. And so it's also the very, very hottest month of the season. And we had an incident near my neighborhood where somebody was severely injured because of the heat. So I just want to give just a tips and just a reminder that as you're enjoying the nice few days of summer, be mindful of the heat, stay hydrated, and really don't push your body overly. Just listen to your body. And I wish everybody a really good, happy rest of the summer. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo and Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, I didn't get to attend many of the concerts in the park, but the ones that I was at were terrific, great crowds. And I think I would make a case that maybe we should do these all the way through August. They're that much fun, so, I know. I know that staff cringes at that, but it might be a lot of fun. Thank you, good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai and Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
Yeah, I just want to have a commenting. One of those public speakers emailed coming, coming here. It's regarding the concern about the, you know, breaking of the cars, burglary of the cars that happens more and more and more often now. As everybody knows, public safety is one of our major concerns. And the other concern, of course, is traffic and transportation, which we heard some good news tonight. Regarding public safety, regarding the how to safe keep your cars, of course, that our sheriff department has educated us many, many times. Make sure you lock your car, make sure that you don't put any valuable in the car. Also, don't put anything visible in the car, including car keys and garage openers in the car. And park your car in this, in a safe place. And this resident, their location is probably very safe, very quiet. But nowadays, I think that those burglars just going through the cities, going everywhere, there's no, no place is safe. So we have to be very alert on how we, how we park our cars. And of course, we are working very hard with our sheriff and to keep our city safe. But I would say that the most important thing is still not in our local control. Most important thing is up there in the county, county level, in the state level. So it's very important and so we have to come to, eventually come to see which, which one do we vote? So we have to come to the politics inevitably. So later this year, and I think we need to be more educated to how to vote for the city, the L A County Attorney, District Attorney, because I think, I believe that kind of, that position is very important to determine the future of the public safety. So I ask the, our residents in our city to keep, keep an eye on all those opportunities to learn about the election, about the district attorneys, so that hopefully we, we can vote for the, and we can select a better and good alternative so that we will improve on our public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Tang. I'd like to thank staff for today's meeting and presentation. And I also like to give a big shout out to staff for making Summer in Diamond Bar a huge blast. And Summer Concert in the Parks and the movies are definitely very amazing. And just to see so many families, little kids out there playing, the craft, the jingas and beach balls is like a mini festival every Wednesday. It is definitely very amazing. I'd like to, once again, remind everyone that there is a paper shredding and e-waste collection this Saturday. And school is back next Monday. So, which also means traffic will be back. So we ask that and thank everyone for a little bit more patience on Monday morning as we get our kids and rush our kids back to, back to school. And I wish our kids a great school year. Speaking of, of the city, the Concert in the Park, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez joined us three, two times in the summer. And one of the things that she has coming up on August sixteenth, it is the Senior Fair. So the Senior Fair is organized by Councilmember, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. Every year, and this year, it will be hosted at Ceritos College once again, and offering service, free service to our seniors in the district and also the area, things including such as blood pressure checks, access to legal, legal resources, among all this free lunch and the benefits and all kinds of information from the government and also on the, and the health and wellness of the seniors. So lunches included, and we will have a bus that's going out of our Diamond Bar Center on the sixteenth, and I will be cheparoning the bus. So we look forward to that, and it definitely is a great resource. And this past Tuesday, we, one of our longtime residents, Mr. Pat Maroon, which we joined us when we honor last, last year at our Veterans Event and have served our country dearly, and left us. And after a, a very, very courageous fight against cancer, and I left us last Tuesday. And one thing that our residents talked about, Pat, is Pat is always so courageous, and he's a fighter and is perseverant. I had a chance to visit him at his home. And I go and went in his house and chatted with him. And he noticeably, Pat was in a lot of pain, but he just brushed all that off and talked about how much he loves Diamond Bar and being blessed to be here in Diamond Bar and the positive positivity he offers everyone else and the comments, inspiration for our city of Diamond Bar. We're okay with the council, and I would like to adjourn today's meeting and in the memory of Mr. Pat Maroon. Yes, thank you so much. And we will adjourn to the, this evening's meeting in the memory of Mr. Pat Maroon. With that, I say good night. Thank you so much, at seven thirty. Thank you.